All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Dan Saltzman, and along with Linda Roseman, we're the co-chairs of the Nonpartisan Brookline Neighborhood Alliance. The BNA is an umbrella organization for Brookline's various neighborhood associations. We're sort of a glue, and we better hold the organizations together. We facilitate communications among the neighborhood associations, and we facilitate communications with the town. We hold events like this one as well. And the BNA's goal is essentially to inform the residents of Brookline on a variety of issues. Tonight, we expect to inform the voters about the candidates running for select board, and we thank you for coming here. Being a select board member is not an easy office to hold. Brookline is the largest town in New England, maybe even the largest in the country, we're not sure about that one. But we have an enormous budget, hundreds of millions of dollars. And, you know, serving on the select board for three years carries with it a tremendous responsibility, as we all know. Now, they do get paid. They get roughly $3,500, which it works out to about $2 to $4 an hour. That's the minimum wage in 1981, okay? So, for that pay, they put in a minimum, I think, a minimum of about 15 hours each week. That is a minimum, but often, it really turns into a full-time job. They serve as one of five of our town's executive, chief executives. And of course, they're regularly thanked by everybody in the town. They hear nothing but praise from all of us. They enjoy nothing but peace and serenity in their term. That's actually probably not how it works out, as we all know. It's a really hard job, and it's often thankless. We owe the people that are running for the select board a debt of gratitude. Contested races, like what we have right now, two people or four people running for two seats, they're good for the town. When you have a contested race, you have communication from the candidates. You have the candidates communicating with their constituents, and it's just good for the town, and it's good for democracy. So, our most sincere thanks for everybody that's running. Thank you all for being here tonight, and for watching on Big and on the Internet. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Linda Roseman. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Tonight, we have a panel of four candidates for select board who are seated in alphabetical order: Bernard Green, Alec Levovitz, Susan Park, and David Pearlman. Unfortunately, Sana Hafiz, the fifth candidate, had a conflict and could not be here tonight. Each candidate will have three minutes for introductions and opening statements. Next, each candidate will have two minutes to answer questions posed by the moderator, and then two minutes each for closing statements, and we will rotate the order for speakers. Due to the number of candidates, and in the interest of time, we have prepared questions ahead of time on various topics, and we will not be taking questions from the audience. We ask that the audience members hold their applause to the end of the program. And with that, I will turn it over to our moderator, Sean Lynn Jones, who was chosen for his neutrality, he has not endorsed any candidates, and for his great skills of moderation. Our timekeeper is sitting in the front row for the candidates. Lee Cook Childs, our veteran and celebrity timekeeper, will be holding up signs to let the speakers know when their time is up and to keep them on track in managing their time. So we thank you again for coming, and I'll turn it over to Sean Lynn Jones.
Thank you very much, Dan and Linda. I should just explain, in case anyone is wondering. The reason I have not endorsed any candidates is not because I think they're all wonderful and I can't decide, or that they're all terrible and I don't think any are worthy of endorsement. I also happen to be president of the Brookline Greenspace Alliance, which is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. And it might create the impression that the organization is endorsing a town-wide candidate if I were to endorse anyone. So that is why I am not endorsing anyone or otherwise contributing to any campaigns, and therefore, I've been selected to moderate this debate. The first item on the agenda is opening statements from each candidate. The limit is three minutes. And because we thought it would be complicated to provide introductions for the candidates, we're letting them say anything they want about their own background, and then offering an opening overall statement. We will begin in alphabetical order and rotate for subsequent questions and statements. So Bernard Green, you're first.
Thank you, Sean. I appreciate that. And Dan, you know, we get a lot of grief from the community, but I have to say that I get a lot of praise and people coming up to me and saying they appreciate what I do. I mean, it looks like something else, but it's really not as bad as some people think. So I wanted to introduce myself by saying, or telling you some things that you may not know about me. I grew up all over the world. My father is in the military. And that gave me a perspective that I think is very useful here in Brookline. As an adolescent and young adult, I grew up in Philadelphia. That's why I'm so tough. Philadelphia is an interesting place to live. In 2002, I moved here to Brookline from Nashville, Tennessee. And in 2006, I began my career in town government, running for town meeting from precinct seven. I'm a retired lawyer. I used to be the general counsel for Mass Clean Water Trust. And throughout my career, I've done public finance. My approach to politics, as I've said from the very beginning, is I'm a thoughtful progressive, which means that I don't follow any ideological orientation. I don't jump on the latest passing bandwagon. I try to address problems that we have here in town from the standpoint of what is practical, what is sustainable, and what is progressive. And I think that's the best way to address the complexities of the problems that we face here in Brookline. And my website is bernardgreen.org, and you can go visit me and see what else you want to, what else you can find out about me. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernard. Alec Levovitz, you're up the floor for three minutes.
Thank you, Sean, Linda, and to the whole BNA team for hosting us tonight. My name is Alec Levovitz. I'm a town meeting member representing Coolidge Corner, and I'm running for select board because I love this town. It's been my adoptive home for the last eight years, ever since I came to Greater Boston for a higher education. We have so much to celebrate about our community, including the vibrant civic life that is on full display tonight. But we face serious challenges as well. Our community is increasingly unaffordable. Our municipal finances are strained. We're grappling with a region-wide housing crisis, and too often, we fail to live up to our community values of inclusion and equity. But despite the challenges, I have a lot of optimism for Brookline's future. When we have leadership that brings people together, that listens to and respects a diversity of viewpoints, that is data-driven and compassionate, this community can accomplish great things. These are the principles that have guided me during my time in town meeting, and this is the kind of leadership that I will bring to the Brookline Select Board. While I'm newer to local politics than the other candidates up this table, public policy is not new to me, and in fact, has been my life's passion. In my career, I'm a policy analyst specializing in state and federal Medicaid policy, the safety net of our healthcare system. In various roles in the public, private, and nonprofit sectors, I've seen firsthand the impact that public policy can have in people's lives, even saving them in certain cases. As an advocate, a policy professional, and a researcher, I've spent my life exploring how effective policies are created, implemented, and how to win support for those policies. I believe I've proven this through my work in town meeting. In the past two years, I've led the passage of eight warrant articles, including five new local bylaws. Along with my many cosponsors and partners, I've reduced municipal operating costs. I've made our local government more transparent and promoted solutions to the housing crisis. I helped to strengthen Brookline's rodent control efforts after the pandemic by increasing penalties on violators of our refuse bylaws. I've worked with coalitions to put in place the strongest possible local protections for reproductive healthcare and gender-affirming care. I've led and initiated an independent review of our pilot program that has the potential to bring in millions in new revenue without raising taxes on a single resident. And most recently, I introduced, developed, and passed a workable plan to bring rent stabilization back to Brookline to provide immediate relief to the residents most at risk of displacement. As a member of the select board, I will continue to do what I've done in town meeting: build coalitions across the political spectrum to advance the policies that matter and make a difference in people's lives. I want to see a Brookline that's affordable and accessible to everyone, that offers opportunity to all, and that celebrates our diversity and honors our values. With your help, we can make this vision a reality. I'm asking for your support and your vote on May 7. Together, we can make a real difference in Brookline, and I'd encourage you to go to alecforbrookline.com to learn more about my platform and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Alec. The next opening statement is from Susan Park.
Thank you, Sean and Linda. Thanks for hosting all of us tonight, and it's great to see everyone. So my name is Susan Park, and I'm running for select board. I'm a town meeting member from precinct 17. I'm also the Town Meeting Member Association Vice President for, this is my second year. I was on the fiscal advisory committee, and I got my public leadership credential certificate from the Harvard Kennedy School. So what defines good leadership? Empathy, authenticity, courage, integrity, flexibility, open to change, commitment, vision, evidence of collaboration, communicating with others, and leading? These are qualities that describe me. I led the ballot referendum last May that passed in all 17 precincts because I billed consensus and was courageous enough to ask the questions and to lead against opposition. I strongly believe a diversity of experiences and perspectives will make the select boards stronger and better. I am known for my leadership to roll up my sleeves and to get work done because people matter to me the most in Brookline. I sat on the Marijuana Study Committee, and because of my leadership and in collaboration with the Marijuana Study Committee, we found out that one in three 12th graders are using cannabis regularly in the last 30 days at BHS. And the Health Department and commissioners have made it clear that they will be working on making sure our Brookline students get the support they need. I sat on the Brookline Wellness Policy Board, and line by line, made sure our K-12 students would get emotional and social wellness curriculum and substance abuse curriculum that was missing, especially with the mental health crisis we are in. Also, I've passed warrant articles in town. Some real stats: there are 54.1 females in Brookline, according to our American Community Survey; 31% immigrants, and 18% Asians. Our executive board should reflect our constituency. I have a wealth of experiences with a global perspective, having been a department head at an international baccalaureate high school, serving over 35 different countries, managing the budget and finances of this department, not to mention managing a household for three decades. If I am elected to the select board, I will do the following: I will, one, continue to bring people together, build consensus, help to heal our town, and bridge the gaps in our town. Two, I will increase revenue for our town by having honest conversations about our budget. And three, I would be honored to liaise the select board with the Housing Authority for the 22 High Street Public Housing Project of 100 affordable housing units, make sure it's built with quality. In closing, my mom is one of my best friends. She's 81. I know what she needs, and I know what the seniors need because I pay attention to the group of people in town that get less than 1% of the budget. My 26-year-old is newly engaged, and I absolutely want housing that serves our community. I hope you will vote for me, Susan Park. Go to susanforbrookline.com. Thank you.
The next, the final opening statement comes from David Pearlman.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the hosts for putting this together. Brookline is coursing through my veins. I have been living here since I was four years old in 1986. I am a product of the Brookline Public Schools. I attended Pierce for preschool. I went to Lincoln for kindergarten and first grade. I went to what was then called the Devotion School for grades two through eight, and then Brookline High School for grades nine through 12. I stayed local for my collegiate and law school years. I attended Brandeis University, followed by Boston University School of Law. Upon graduating from law school, I became a child welfare attorney. More specifically, I was working in cases where DCF intervenes with families due to allegations of abuse or neglect. In that context, I work with clients around issues of housing instability, domestic violence, substance misuse, mental health concerns. And I try to place children back with their parents where that's possible, or if not, try to find a good home for them with relatives or others. And in doing that work, I have seen firsthand what happens when our institutions don't quite rise up high enough to fill in the gaps for those who are experiencing vulnerabilities. And that has inspired me to be involved in local civic affairs. So I first started in town meeting in 2013. I have been representing precinct 15 for over 10 years now. In 2018, I first ran for school committee, and then I was re-elected in 2021. I've been the chair of the school committee for the last two years. And in that capacity, I have been very actively involved in negotiating very important contracts with the Brookline Educators Union, as well as with AFSMI. The school committee oversees about 60% of our municipal budget. And that experience is something that I think will be very helpful if I'm able to switch over to the select board side, to provide insights into that process and to use the real-life experiences that I have gained in contract negotiations. Because collective bargaining is also very critical to the work of the select board, which also deals with negotiations with various unions. Some of my priorities on the select board will include addressing concerns around affordability. We cannot overly rely on tax increases to our residents. There's going to come a point where we are going to continue to lose more diversity. And if we're really serious about wanting to have diversity in this town, and I believe that's a value we all share, we need to try to find other ways to... So I hope you go to my website, electpearlman.com, to learn more, and thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now turn to questions, which have not been shared with the candidates ahead of time. So these, unless I have better cybersecurity or hacking skills than I'm aware of. The first one is, if you are elected on May 7, what are the one or two items that you're going to want to tackle right away as your first priorities? And this time, we'll begin with Alec Levovitz as the first speaker. Two minutes is the limit now.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sean. It's a great question. I think there are two things that I hear most frequently from talking to folks out on the campaign trail, and they are housing and housing affordability. And the second item is sidewalk and road repair. No other issues have come even close to the amount of times I've heard about this. So I think those are issues that need to be addressed right away because these are issues that will take time for the town to make adequate investments in and for those investments to pay dividends. On the housing front, we've made a great start with the recent passage of the rezoning of Harvard Street that has the potential to revitalize a critical commercial artery while also making it a place that can support new multifamily housing by right. I'd like to see us continue to put our foot on the gas in that process. We've done voluminous studies on other potential areas that are ripe for rezoning, such as the Washington Square Commercial District, the Route 9 Commercial District, and stretches of Beacon and Commonwealth Avenue. So I'd like to see what solutions we could move through town meeting to make more multifamily housing construction available in those areas, as well as commercial development. On the sidewalk and road repair front, this is an issue that is going to take time to address, but we need to begin to shift funds now. I did join with another group of my town meeting colleagues last year to advocate very strongly with the town administrator to begin shifting these funds. And the town administrator was amenable to that suggestion and has done this. So we've already seen multiple new millions in annual funding shifted towards sidewalk and road repair. But I can tell you, based on my conversations with Brookliners, it is certainly not enough. So I'd like us to, again, moving through the extensive backlog of repair requests and traffic calming requests we've accrued, and just shifting more of our budget towards those high-priority areas in the first few years.
Thank you. Susan Park.
Okay, thank you for the question, Sean. The first thing I would do, because I have been working with the Marijuana Study Committee, and the results that we found that the one in three 12th graders are using marijuana regularly, this is, this number is very concerning. It was concerning for the study group. It was concerning for the Health Commissioner. And, you know, so there's a lot of work to be done there that can be done quickly without even too many funds because we have a whole network kind of already in place. I'm also on the Brookline Parent Education Network Board, and we meet monthly. And we talk about the needs of students, what we're seeing. And if I were on the select board, like, I already have relationships with people who could, you know, make these things happen. We were thinking about having a health summit, and we, there was one last year, and they wanted to make it bigger this year. So that's one thing. The second thing would be, I mean, with Ruth Ann leaving and her request of the senior center never being painted since, you know, since they built it, I would, you know, there's, there's a way to make that happen. And so I would, you know, work with the powers that be that we could make that happen. And also, I think, you know, for me, one of my natural strengths is to collect information and data. And an easy thing that we could also do is really take the temperature of our town. How's our town doing? What are the needs? And let's make that happen. So I would definitely be working on that as well because I want to know how everyone's doing, especially post-COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. David Pearlman.
So the two major areas I hear about when speaking to people: one, affordability. People are very concerned about their property taxes. They're very concerned about whether they can remain in Brookline. And so something I would dive right into is the comprehensive planning process, which is already underway. Because I think it's absolutely critical that we analyze different uses for our various parcels in such a way that we can try to grow the proverbial pie, bring in more commercial revenue so that we can help pay for the outstanding services that we have come to expect and deserve in this community. Because affordability is not just a housing priority, but it's also a climate mitigation priority. It's a racial justice priority. And so this is definitely something that's on top of my agenda. Specifically, I'm very interested in the Chestnut Hill Route 9 West corridor and what we could do there to optimize bringing in revenue. And also Commonwealth Avenue, I think we need to look at. I see a lot of opportunities there. Another area would be municipal amenities. A lot of people talk about how we need more playing fields, how we need to have more fun here in Brookline. And there's a lot of frustration about sometimes the lack of such amenities. And I think a fairly easy lift there would be to renegotiate our pilots with private universities that are in town and also private high schools and elementary schools. We already have a lot of playing fields within our borders. We already, we have an observatory. We have lots of fantastic places that our residents could potentially access. And so I would speak with the different universities that have footprints within town to see what we can do to make their resources available to us all. And I think that that would make a lot of people much happier residents in town.
Thank you. Bernard Green.
Yes, thank you, Sean. My first priority would be following up town meeting and the budget vote that town meeting will have taken is to engage the select board in a process that we set up last year to develop the select board's goals and objectives and incorporate that into the budget process starting in September. In that, in that way, we can address the issues such as our infrastructure. We have a lot of deferred maintenance, and that is seen in both our roads and sidewalks, as well as, you know, our buildings, including the senior center, which are on the list for improvement by the Building Department. And, you know, we've been working on the streets and sidewalks issue since before CHAZ-Carry is started under Town Administrator Kleckner, and will continue that because that is an issue that we all hear out in the street and in emails sent to us. You know, these are not easy problems. And, you know, what I think needs to be done is to, you know, have long-term plans to address them in the slow, deliberate way that will enable us to solve them. You know, there are no, you know, money trees around. For example, the pilot program is not a money tree that we can tap and get more funds from. You know, for example, we've been struggling with Boston College in terms of their pilots. They're a private institution, though. We can't force them to sign a pilot. What we can do is work with them, figure out what are their needs and what are our needs, and see if we can find some way to make them align and bring them into pilot agreements. But there's no, there's no magic bullet there or anywhere. This is, this is tough.
Thank you. Thank you for adhering to the two-minute limit, however tough that may be, in some cases, too. You know, you raised a lot of interesting issues in your responses, and I think we'll come back to those with some of our later questions. But the second question I have is a much more general one about what it means to be a select board member in a community like Brookline. Unlike town meeting members, and we've all served in town meeting and may be there now, town meeting members who represent a particular precinct, the select board members are all elected at large, representing the residents of Brookline as a whole. What steps would you take to provide broad representation and communication with our very diverse and heterogeneous community? And this time, we will start with Susan Park.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Great question. So to, so for broad representation, yeah, I mean, that's a really great question because having talked to many people, including a lot of seniors, the response I get often is that they don't get a lot of the information. I mean, perhaps they might get it if they go to the senior center, but there's also people who don't go to the senior center. There's people who just don't get information. So I would really work hard, and of, and of course, you know, I'm one of five, I would be one of five if I'm elected. So I would collaborate and work together, but really think about ways that we can get out into the community and, you know, really hear from them. And so I think it would, you know, on one hand, people get mail. You know, everyone gets mail. Everyone has a mailbox. So that would be one thing. But it would also have to have in different languages because not everyone speaks English. Thank you.
Thank you. David Pearlman.
I would agree that outreach is critically important to the role of being a select board member. So in my capacity as chair of the school committee, what we have done is outreach into each school community. And so oftentimes, there'll be school committee members present at each K-8 school and the high school to hear from parents at that school and have an understanding about what the specific needs and interests are of those particular stakeholders. I would take a similar approach to the select board. Perhaps go precinct by precinct and have, hold office hours in each neighborhood, maybe at a coffee place, and just meet with people. And that's something I already do now as a school committee member on occasion, and I would continue to do that on the select board in perhaps a very organized fashion so that people are definitely aware of it. And in addition to that outreach, I think it's also important to continue to work with stakeholder groups that are not just along geographic boundaries, but also in terms of interests, in terms of identity. And that's something else that I've done on the school committee. I believe that I would be a very unifying presence because I already work with diverse groups and try to bring them together in culturally sensitive manner. I'm very open to meeting with anyone and everyone. Those who reach out to me know that when they make a request to meet with me, I try to grant it as quickly as I can, and that would be a practice that I continue. Also, there are times where I can help facilitate a meeting with someone else. Perhaps it's not just me, who the person or group would like to meet with, but staff or other colleagues of mine who are on the same board. And so that is also something that I would entertain. Listening is critically important. Sometimes, the greatest mark of leadership is not so much what you say, but are you hearing people? And are you reflecting what you're hearing? And are you respecting people's input?
Thank you. Bernard Green.
Thank you, Sean. So what, what does it mean to be on the select board as opposed to town meeting, which is how you posed this question? You know, select board is responsible for the entire town. And that means various interest groups, whether that's South Brookline versus North Brookline, seniors versus educational issues, the wealthy and privileged versus the people in town who have needs. You know, this is a balancing act in terms of the budget, as well as in terms of, you know, how much attention is given to it. as well as in terms of, you know, how much attention is given to each group's interests. One of the things that we became aware of is that many times our senior community does not feel that
Please speak into the microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Many times our senior, is this even on, does that work?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Many times our senior community thinks that boards and commissions operate and come up with ideas that don't take into consideration their unique and special needs. We're trying to address that by making sure that all of our boards and commissions have, not seniors, I mean, that's me, I'm old, but people who have a senior focus, someone who's thought about and worked on senior issues and therefore can bring that particular perspective to the workings of different boards and commissions. In general, I think as a Select Board member, you have to even more so than Town Meeting member, as David said, listen. And listen, you know, not just, you know, with your ears open, but listen with your mind open and respond based on, you know, the concerns that people have expressed to you. Being on the Select Board is very, very difficult, and none of these things are easy. I don't claim that they're easy, but, you know, they're tasks that we have. And to the extent that we succeed, to some degree, the town is better off. Thank you.
Thank you. Alec Levavitz.
Thanks, Sean. And I think this is a great question. And the way I view this is there are really two components from the Select Board member's role. One is the personal and the personal conduct of the member, but the other is how they approach and how we might change structures that already exist or do not exist in town. On the personal front, I think we have good role models already on the Select Board in terms of improving communication. Both members, John Van Skoyak and Paul Warren, have semi-regular newsletters. I'd love to emulate that pattern and create a newsletter of my own. I've also been, as a Town Meeting member, very responsive to constituents. I see several precinct eight constituents in the audience. If I'm ever contacted, I will always write back to you. We may not always agree, but I will always let you know what I, where I stand on an issue. I like David's suggestion of moving town, or having town halls or Select Board meetings even, at locations around town. That emulates something that state budget makers have done for many years, and I think has served them well in incorporating diverse feedback. I do think we have a responsibility to review and be very intentional about the membership of advisory bodies and committees. For instance, renters, although they comprise a majority of Brookline residents, are massively underrepresented, both in Town Meeting and on boards and commissions. But so are seniors or people representing senior interests. So are people who represent the interests of young people just starting out in Brookline. So I'd like to see more diversity reflected in those committees as well. But I also think it's incumbent on us as Select Board members to make public processes more transparent or to relieve the burden that we place on people who want to make their viewpoints known. One example is the Select Board recently changed their policy around public comment. Public comment now is limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of a meeting, and anyone who wishes to make a comment beyond that 15 minutes has to wait until the end of the Select Board agenda to do so, an agenda that frequently runs past 9:00 PM on weeknights, Tuesday nights. I don't agree with that policy. I'd like to see public comment period moved to the beginning of the meeting. I know that does place a bit of a, more of a burden on the members of the Select Board, but I think it's critical that we do not put barriers to members of the public expressing their opinions at Select Board meetings. So those are a few changes I'd like to see.
Thank you very much. Now, with the next question, we're going to focus a little bit more on issues and policies and some of the issues that came up when you gave your initial answers regarding your priorities. And I will say, as moderator, that I urge you to be as specific as possible in answering these questions and not necessarily just to say, "We need to study. We need to plan. We need to have a conversation." I think it would be beneficial to those who are here tonight, those who are watching, and the voters, if you could try to, you know, give us all specific answers and not generalities. So the first question, you know, builds on some thing that came up in several answers before. Residential property taxes provide the lion's share of revenue for Brookline's town governments, about 78% of general fund revenue. And I feel comfortable in saying that as a former chair of the Advisory Committee. That's excluding the enterprise funds, if you really want to get into the details here, but general fund revenue. This town has struggled for years to find ways to increase our commercial tax base. I can't remember when we weren't talking about it. Do you have any ideas that have not yet been considered about specific measures that the town could implement to achieve this goal of increasing our commercial tax base, so we didn't rely, we don't rely so heavily on the residential taxpayers? The first person to answer will be David Pearlman.
Thank you, Sean. So this is a priority of mine. And as I started to mention, I think that we need to try to optimize parcels in a manner that is going to generate the most revenue that we can, particularly on the commercial side, because on the commercial side, there's a relatively low demand on town services. And so that's very ideal in terms of increasing the tax base. So specifically, the Chestnut Hill Route 9 West, there are some parcels on the westernmost edge with Newton that are very deep parcels that could likely accommodate fairly large commercial establishments. And what I would do is not just look to change the zoning and then hope that businesses will magically come, but to affirmatively reach out to the types of businesses that we think would function well at a particular location such as that one. And one way to do that, of course, is to consult commercial brokers or experts in that area. Another way to do that is to identify areas of need in terms of what is lacking in the greater Boston area that could fit in a given footprint. To provide a micro example, I'm a sports fan. I get frustrated that there are no late-night sports bars in the part of town I live in, which is precinct 15. And I would think that such an establishment would function very well on Route 9, in Route 9 West, would bring in revenue. It's a small example, but looking at opportunities such as that, such as those, it adds up over time. Similarly, Commonwealth Avenue, there are a lot of one- and two-story structures. There are parking lots. If we could upzone parts of Commonwealth Avenue, I think we could realize significant commercial gains there. So my overall
Thank you. Bernard Green, you're next.
You want specific ideas.
About increasing the commercial tax base.
There aren't a whole lot of specific ideas that haven't already been done. But what I think we can do and do more is to work with the Planning Department to make sure that there's outreach to not just local businesses, but businesses outside of Brookline that have a reason to be in Brookline and encourage them and, you know, to the extent we can incentivize them, incentivize them to consider opening up shop here in Brookline. Those are, you know, relatively small type businesses, but I think that they are very important as a foundation. You know, areas such as Station Street, which used to be an automobile manufacturing site, you know, could be used or offered in that way. Chestnut Hill, the Chestnut Hill area is also something that we're focusing in on and is a specific way in which we can potentially have a major increase in commercial development for the benefit of Brookline. There's no, like I said about other things, there's no money tree out there. These are very difficult issues, because Brookline has a lot of, a lot of requirements, permitting requirements before businesses can open. And we should look at those to see if we can make it easier for businesses to come into Brookline and open up. But, you know, there, this, no one should think that this is an easy problem that has easy answers that we can pull out of our hat. It's going to be difficult. It's going to be a long-term process.
Alec Levavitz.
Like I've said many times, it's longer if you don't start.
Thank you. Alec Levavitz.
I certainly agree with Bernard that it's difficult, and we better start now, because of, you know, the best time we could have started was yesterday, and the second best time is today. I think there's a couple key components to this issue. One is zoning. It is not a coincidence that when we were considering the rezoning of Harvard Street, we had overwhelming support among Harvard Street business owners for the rezoning. When we create walkability and smart density in commercial districts, this is the lifeblood that supports these businesses. These, I mean, that is kind of as simple as it gets in that regard. I would like to see the town take a more direct, hands-on approach in encouraging small business formation. And there are many models out there we can consider, from micro loans to direct grants, even just the provision of technical assistance to the permitting issues that Bernard alluded to. It's very complex to open a business in Brookline. Just having a liaison or someone on the town side that can walk them through that, potential business owners, can go a long way. I'd also like to see us getting more direct feedback from the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Advisory Board. I'd like to see more money given to that board, EDAB, to see if they can set up some of these micro loaner grant programs. And as a brief aside, I do think pilot is a big component of this issue as well. The reality is $800 million in property in Brookline is currently tax-exempt. That doesn't lower the tax levy for the town. It shifts it onto residents. I'll repeat that. It shifts it onto residents, $800 million of property value. I've proposed a revised pilot policy that would not only encourage new pilot developments or agreements with the town, but would actually create monetary incentives for the tax-exempt entities to enter into an agreement with the town and contribute something. Just anything would be better than nothing, which is what we're getting from the majority of tax-exempt entities currently in Brookline. So it is a complex issue. There's a lot of facets, but I think we need to move them all forward simultaneously. We can walk and chew gum at the same time, folks. So that's, that's my thinking on this.
Susan Park.
Thank you, Sean. So one of the things I would do is to streamline the permitting process, because a lot of small businesses developments, like the permitting process is very cumbersome. And I say that because I've talked to friends who also develop and have been developing on Route 9, and that's what they were saying, too, that the permitting process sometimes just takes almost a year. And so that would be the first thing. Specific ideas, I'm really excited about the Chestnut Hill West. You know, I have, you know, three daughters, two graduated college already, and I have a 14-year-old. And I've surveyed a lot of parents, and one of the things that's missing in Brookline is places for families to go, you know, places where they can go and enjoy themselves. And so Chestnut Hill West has so much potential. We would obviously have to rezone, but I'm thinking, my vision, having traveled, you know, all over the world, I've seen great win-win wow factor places for families to go and just have an amazing time. And what I see for this parcel of land is that it become a destination location, not just for Brookline, but for people from all over Massachusetts, like Newton, Somerville. One example is a climbing wall. I have friends who live in Wabun, and they go all the way to Somerville to go to this nice, big climbing wall. In my travels when I lived overseas, there was this amazing, like, 10-floored climbing center. Every floor was different. Every floor had an amazing experience. Families would go there for birthday parties. Young adults would go there for exercise. Older people would go there, and they would enjoy coffee, restaurants. So it's just like, you go into the destination center. The, one other example is, like, in Pennsylvania, my sister invited me to this amazing candle-making coffee place. And when she told me about it, I was like, "We're going to make candles?" But when we went there, it was like, the size of it was maybe triple this room. And it was so cool, because like, the whole place was packed. People from all ages were there. Some were there on dates. Some were there for a birthday party. Some were there with, like, my sisters and I, we were doing like a sisterly bonding thing. And it was just like, very, it was an edifying place. It drew a lot of clientele, and people knew about it. And I left there thinking, you know, this is what we need in Brookline. We need something like this that would, like at Chestnut Hill West, that would really draw people. And these ideas, I think, one, it would be great for Brookline and the families of Brookline, you know, seniors, young people. And, and when I think of, you know, the service I want to do for Brookline, I'm not thinking about just like, one group. I'm thinking of, you know, everyone from the young, little ones, all the way up to seniors, because those, you know, running a household for almost three decades and having a daughter that's now engaged and being so close to my, my mom and my in-laws, like, I really want to make something there that would be really a gift for Brookline. So those are just some specific examples. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. The next question is also about a fiscal matter, and it came up in some of the earlier responses regarding your priorities and other issues. It's a question that's also about property taxes, which have increased significantly in recent years as voters have approved overrides and debt exclusions that have enabled the town to raise taxes beyond the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2. So the specific question here is, what is your position on operating overrides and debt exclusion ballot questions? If elected, under what specific circumstances would you vote to place such questions on a town-wide ballot? And you are first, Bernard Green.
Okay. That question can't be answered in the abstract. It's a complex question that was, that relates to Proposition 2 and 1/2, and the intentionality behind Proposition 2 and 1/2, that cities and towns run structural deficits. So, you know, we're stuck with that. And how do we, how do we avoid going to override in order to address our structural deficits over the years? There are a variety of ways. Number one, you know, good planning and everything from comprehensive planning to proper budgetary planning. There, my position on overrides, like I said, depends on, you know, what is the context? We don't want to have overrides every year, or even on a regular basis, at least in my opinion. But, you know, because of Proposition 2 and 1/2, we're forced to occasionally go to the voters and ask for additional funds to run the town. And to the extent that we can justify them, like the last override, I think that the community will accept the fact that we need additional funds for our town. Again, it's not an easy thing, and I can't answer whether I would support an override in the abstract. It really depends on how well we've prepared it, what the circumstances with respect to our need, and, you know, whether we can find alternatives to the override at that particular point in time.
Thank you. Alec Levavitz.
Thank you, Sean. Yeah, this is, I think, a really fundamental question for local governance in Brookline. The reality is overrides are a necessary part of the way we fund our local government, and that is not likely to change anytime soon. What I can commit to as a member of the Select Board is I will try every innovative policy solution I can to lower the amount that we'll need to go to the voters to ask for. A couple examples for this can include, instead of proposing another 1% tax increase in a future override, we could instead go to the voters and ask them to increase the Community Preservation Act surcharge by a percentage. While that would equate to the same tax increase on voters, what would also occur with an increase in the CPA surcharge would, we would pull down millions of dollars in new matching funds from the state, which could lower that total override burden we had to ask voters for. Pilot and pilot policy redevelopment and commercial redevelopment, as well as user fees for certain town services, I think are another component to this, to lower the aggregate tax increase. But better budget management as well. I favor the zero-based budget approach for certain municipal departments, as well as other innovative practices, to see where we could cut potential departments without impacting services, and again, reduce that override ask. But fundamentally, though we think of overrides as scary, because they do result in tax increases, I think what's important to emphasize here as well is, this is a democratic process. We cannot raise your taxes above that 2 and 1/2% without asking your permission first. So to that point, I think it's absolutely critical that we improve transparency around the process by which we develop the override ask. And I also favor the future inclusion of ladder voting, like we saw in the past override. We can give you an itemized list as a voter and say, you know, We can give you an itemized list as a voter and say, you know, "How far would you like to go for a tax increase? What do you think is worth the trade-off?" For example, in the last override, voters supported raising taxes to maintain key municipal services, but opted not to increase taxes on certain other potential programs we might fund. So I think by taking a more holistic approach, by using innovative policy and budget management practices to reduce that total ask, and again, by improving transparency and opportunity for public feedback in the democratic process around overrides, I think we can optimize what really is an essential policy tool that we need to use. And as I said, it's not likely to change in the near future.
Susan Park?
Okay, thanks, Sean. Yes, like Alec said, I think that overrides are part of, you know, the way society runs. But I also agree with Bernard that, you know, this is a very complicated question in that, you know, there's many different ways to really manage the budget. And so, my answer is that, one, like, managing our finances is critical. You know, I think being an excellent steward of finances is, and leading that is part of being on the Select Board, and leading in a way that's, that looks at the finances and says, "Can our community even afford this?" You know? And I say that only because I've spoken with a lot of people who are very concerned about their, their tax increase, that they're starting to see, and I know they're gonna see more as the year unfolds. And so, we really need to manage and look and see, like, are we, is our revenue, are we maximizing our revenue? Is there more that can be done? And, you know, one, like, small example would be even our parking meter, parking meters. In one year's time, my, I must have encountered at least a dozen broken parking meters. And that's revenue that we can generate. What really ticked me off was, that was the only parking space, and so, you know, I parked there, I got out, the, it's not working, I pulled out my credit card, it's not working. And so I thought, "Well, it's broken, but it's the only parking space, I leave," and then I get a ticket. But anyway, so I feel like we can do a better job managing what we have. And then I think, you know, maybe that would even help with the revenue. And so if that's one example, what are some of the other examples that we can also work on? So, the other thing would be, you know, tightening the belt. Managing, managing the budget also means looking and see, looking to see, you know, where we can save. And I'm, I would really seriously consider an audit, and seeing like, where are we wasting money? And I know that we have an audit committee, and so something is being done there, but I think we need to do a little bit of more of that, because, you know, and without getting into, well, I'll leave that for another question, but... So, so my answer to that would really be better management, and, and of course, without sitting on the Select Board, once you get there, I know you, you learn along the way, but my concern really is for the people, you know, who, who won't be able to stay in Brookline with override after override. And I know the town administrator has made it abundantly clear that in the next few years there will be, like, he basically said, quote, like, "Get used to it," you know? So, we do have to, I mean, that's the reality of it. The reality is that these overrides are gonna happen, but we do need to strike a balance. We need, we need to understand how this is really impacting the people of Brookline. And so, that would be my thing too, is really to reach out and see, "How is this impacting you?" Because then, once we collect that data, then we can put our heads together and figure out what's the next thing we can do. You know, you know, what kind of state aid can we get? The CPA, as Alec talked about as well. So, yeah, that's my answer. Thanks.
Thank you. David Perlman.
So I really feel that we need to do all that we can to extricate ourselves from this cycle of frequent overrides. We keep hearing that the number-one issue for most is affordability, because whether you are a homeowner or a renter, increased property taxes affect you, and it prices you out of Brookline. And we are increasingly becoming a town without a middle class. And so I would address this issue by looking more toward how we can fix our structural deficit, because that is what increases the pressure for having an override. Furthermore, I would really work on commercial growth, so that we can try to bring in more revenue without having to go directly to residential taxpayers. And I think we also need to be more diligent in analyzing the financial implications of our development proposals and of any other proposal we have in town. Very often, we will see a proposal come before a town meeting, but we don't necessarily fully understand the financial ramifications of it. And oftentimes, that will actually exacerbate our structural deficit. And then a year or two later, we're hearing conversations about, "Well, now we need to have an override because of a change that we made a couple years ago, and we have an increased demand on services." So we need to be very careful about the incremental changes that we make as part of the comprehensive planning process, so that we understand what will be the long-term scenarios for the different proposals that we entertain. And if we do that, I am hopeful that we will be able to avoid overrides. Obviously, we can't always avoid them, there will be times where they occur. But I don't want us to be in a pattern of regular overrides and continuing to price people out of town.
Thank you. I'm gonna follow up a little bit on this question, because I think, almost without exception, and maybe totally, the answers were about the operating budget, fiscal management, and operating overrides, and other sources of revenue to finance the operating budget. The question also included debt exclusions, which raise taxes for a certain, but long period of time to finance major projects, like Pierce School, Brookline High School, Driscoll, or the purchase of part of the former Newbury College campus. And so part of the question was, under what circumstances would you, as a Select Board member, put a debt exclusion, or debt exclusions, on the town-wide ballot? So if you could take, and we'll go in the same order, no more than a minute, just to talk about the debt exclusion override question, as well as the operating override question. And I know for a lot of taxpayers, it may not be an obvious difference, it's just more money on the bill, but they do work very differently from a fiscal standpoint. And I'd like your thoughts on debt exclusions and when we should have them. Bernard, go first.
Okay. Look, we, here in Brookline, we talk about our great schools. Great schools, you know, require great educational facilities. And many of the debt exclusion, or the debt exclusions that we currently, recently have passed, have been for the development or rehabilitation or replacement of schools that really were problematic to the educational excellence of town. So, I would look at debt exclusions from the same standpoint as, as overrides. Have we justified the need for it? And have we been able to go to the community and going, as Alec said, the democratic process, convincing them that this is an important way to ensure the continuation of our excellent schools, which means a continuation of high, of high property values and just the general livability of the town.
Thank you. Alec?
Yeah, thanks, Sean. I think this is a really important component of this question. To Bernard's point, I think he's right about the quality of schools. This is the magnet that draws so many people to Brookline. It is the economic anchor that keeps our property values high. And also providing a decent and well-rounded education for all students is our moral and civic responsibility. So, we need to balance that with the amount of debt that the town can take on and maintain healthy finances. I did support the Pierce debt override, because I think it did balance those things well. We've maintained our AAA bond rating while putting in process the replacement of an educational facility that is desperately in need of replacement, and as currently exists, is not accessible to many of the students who attend there. In terms of how we balance this formally, as a member of the Select Board, I would favor the development and implementation of a maximum debt policy. I think it's reasonable for us to put guardrails around what we think is a sustainable level of debt for us to carry going forward, and for us to maintain that AAA rating, which allows us to borrow cheaply. So I think the development of that policy will require convening of experts, both from the education sphere, as well as budget and financial management. But I'd like to see us put at least a Select Board policy in place to provide some guardrails going forward. That will allow us space to make sure we provide excellent educational facilities while not overly burdening the town.
Thank you. Susan Park?
Yes, thanks, Sean. I do agree with my colleagues, Alec and Bernard, that there are situations when you do have to get them, get the money. And I think schools is one very good example. So, you know, I mean, I think with Pierce, for example, with the, you know, the puddle of water that was there, and parts of the school, that in the tour, they were talking about the open classroom, and how that affected some of the students, and they can't quite understand and concentrate if they're hearing all these different noise, you know, hearing competing noises. So, you know, I think that really impacts the students. And so in these kind of situations, a debt exclusion, when it's emergent, when it affects their learning, is critical. And I think that, yeah, like what Alec said, I mean, that it's exactly true. We can't ignore the needs of our community, we can't ignore that, so... But also, I think it has to be balanced, and we need to see if, we need to see if, like, the full price of it, and like, how it impacts our community as well. So, you know, I do think that there are situations that debt exclusions are required. But also, having said that, I, I think that there is conversations that need to be looked at. Like, I don't think it's always like, it's, it has to be one way or the other. There has to be a lot of conversation, we have to think about this carefully, we have to think about the impact. So, for me, it's not black and white, there is always a gray. Thank you.
Thank you. David Perlman.
So debt exclusions are for special projects. And so, for example, with our schools, schools have a certain life cycle, and there comes a point where a school needs to be renovated and/or replaced. And we happen to have had multiple schools nearing the end of their total usefulness at around the same time, and so that's put on a bit of a pinch. But these have been worthy projects. In addition to schools, I also look at the recent debt exclusion for the fire department. That was critically important, very overdue. I actually would have liked it to go a little further, to include a South Brookline ladder truck, which didn't make it in, but hopefully we'll find a way for that to work out for public safety reasons. We do need to weigh, of course, the amount of debt that we take on with maintaining our AAA bond rating, so we can have lower borrowing rates, that's critically important. And also, another part of my analysis would be, does this debt exclusion add to our operating costs? I think that's fairly critical for me. Because if we are undertaking a project that's going to add new operating funds each year, that's going to exacerbate our structural deficit and potentially create much more difficult problems down the road. So I would be a little more hesitant when the proposal is for a debt exclusion that's going to significantly add to operating expenses that are of a recurring nature. But the debt exclusions that we have undertaken in recent years have not been of that nature in terms of adding significantly to operating costs. And so, that would be my approach.
Thank you very much. And thanks to all of you for taking the additional time to talk about this other dimension of a complicated question. I appreciate your, your answers on the debt exclusions, as well as the operating overrides. Next question, again, returns to a topic that came up in some of the earlier discussion, and that is housing. Now that Town Meeting has voted to adopt changes to Brookline's zoning code in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, and also to allow expanded multifamily housing on Harvard Street, that goes beyond just basic compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, what should be the next steps for Brookline's housing policy? And again, I encourage specific answers, as opposed to generalities about plan studies and conversations. This time, we'll start with Alec. Alec Levovitz.
Yeah, it's, it's a really central question, I think, for Brookline, also certainly this campaign. Housing is the biggest driver of unaffordability in Brookline, and therefore it needs a lot of our attention as we seek to address that issue. I think there are a couple clear next steps that we can and should take. One will be Warren Article 13 up in these upcoming Town Meeting, which will be a redesign of our existing accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, bylaw, which I believe, in its current form, has not resulted in a single ADU being constructed. I think it's really critical we get that right, because the ADUs will bring a new class of housing onto the market that specifically can serve seniors, people on lower or fixed incomes well, and people who are debating either moving in with a child or with a parent. So it just supports, I think, a very underserved segment of the housing market, and I look forward to voting in favor of that article at Town Meeting. At the same Town Meeting where we rezoned Harvard Street, we also passed my Warren Article, which seeks permission from the state for us to implement, I think, a well-balanced and reasonable proposal for rent stabilization, that will cap the rate at which rents are allowed to rise every year. I intend to advocate for that vigorously at the State House, either as a Town Meeting member or as a Select Board member. I think that's something we can do in the short term, that will provide a lifeline to the people most at risk of housing-related displacement here in Brookline. There's another policy that's pending on the State House, that I think is right on the precipice of passage, and something Brookline kicked off, which is a local option real estate transfer fee. Folks may have seen that the Speaker of the Mass House recently seemed to open the door to including that policy, which Brookline asked permission for in 2019 in the Governor's Housing Bond Bill, which is moving through the legislature. Another policy I will advocate for vigorously, in whatever capacity I am in Brookline's local government, that has the potential, I saw a presentation last week. If we had been granted that policy, that transfer fee in 2019, when we requested permission, we would have raised over $70 million for new affordable housing construction in the last five years. That's almost a quarter of our annual town budget that has been left on the table because of inaction at the state level. There are other things we can do locally. Of course, we've talked at length about rezoning other major commercial corridors to accommodate multifamily housing by right. We can also do more to ensure that new development projects have a higher percentage of affordable units or income-restricted units. I think one of the projects that I'm very excited about in our pipeline is the High Street BHA redevelopment, that Susan had referenced earlier. This is a development that's being led by our housing authority, that has the potential in the next few years to bring online 100 units that will be affordable in perpetuity. And it's going to be partially funded by BHA, partially funded by the Community Preservation Act money that I mentioned previously. And we're looking currently for other sources of financing. I'd like to see those projects continue to be developed and move forward, even as we put in place market incentives for developers to start building more affordable units. We can do that directly, through BHA, through the provision of funds from the town. So I think there's a lot of levers we can pull here, and I'd like to see us start pulling levers across the spectrum to really tackle affordability, not just for renters, but for homeowners as well.
Susan Park? Susan Park.
Yes, thank you, Sean. So, the next immediate steps. So, at the last, I believe it was a Select Board meeting, Linda Pelkey was here and she was speaking about the comprehensive planning and how that is in the works. And that is, to me, the very next thing we need to do because with, you know, since the consensus Warren Article passed, the next thing to do is to plan well. And right now, because the interest rates are high and, you know, developers don't really want to build right now because the interest rates, this is a time to plan. And so, with this comprehensive planning, there's going to be a consultant, I believe. And so, all hands on deck, all heads on deck, and let's look and see where we can start building. And the other parcel of land that I think would be really a great place is the Washington Street, the Washington and School Street, right there by the library and there's a CVS. That parcel of land, I think, really has potential as well. So, besides the Harvard Street, we really need to look and see where other parcels of land could really build up. And that's a parcel of land that's right by Pierce. You know, it's only, it's one floor and, you know, I've kind of been talking to other people who are looking for housing too, and it seems like that's a great place to build up. So, comprehensive planning, look for parcels. The 22 High Street that I mentioned before with 100 units that are being built, we also need a liaison. We need, you know, someone from the Select Board, and if I'm elected, I hope it's me, a liaison to be in contact with the Housing Authority Board and just to make sure it's really built well. So, that's, those are my answers. Thanks.
Thank you. David Perlman.
So, the MBTCA consensus plan was a start, but it's not the finish. And the consensus plan did exclude certain key parcels along Harvard Street such as the TJ Maxx site. It also excluded the Stop &amp; Shop site. And so, we could see more significant developments done there, which I would hope ideally would be mixed use, but certainly with a significant housing component. And the reason I say mixed use is I think that if you have lower-floor commercial and housing above, you're creating a natural customer base for those businesses that are on the first floor. In addition to Harvard Street, we could look further at Beacon Street. So, there's the Star Market Parcel on Beacon Street roughly around Washington Square that I think could be redeveloped. We already have some tall buildings in that area. Also, what we could do is support passive, passage of Warren Article 13 for accessory dwelling units. I very much agree with Alec there. That's an exciting opportunity because ADUs tend to be a lot cheaper than most of our existing housing stock. And so, in addition to providing cheaper apartment alternatives to potential residents, it also provides income to homeowners. And so, that's really a win-win because a lot of our seniors, in particular on fixed incomes, who might have a lot of equity but not a lot of liquidity, this would be attractive to them. And so, I hope that this Warren Article will be successful. I think that when we are approaching housing production, we need to be mindful to produce the right mix of housing across all price points. And the reason I say that is it gets back to my earlier point about diversity in town and not just racial diversity but also economic diversity. We are increasingly a town for those who are at the lower end of the economic spectrum and the upper end, and we don't have a lot of transition point opportunities for Brookline residents. I worry about benefits cliffs in Brookline that once some of our residents in the lower end of the economic spectrum start to improve their financial situation somewhat, all of a sudden, they are priced out of Brookline because they just don't have such options available. I do think we're going to need to incentivize the type of housing that we are looking to produce, and that's something that I would actively work on as part of the comprehensive planning process and in looking at some of these additional opportunities at the parcels that I have mentioned.
Thank you. Bernard Green.
Okay. I agree that the BHA and Colonel Floyd developments are something that we really should continue to support because they're incredible opportunities for additional affordable housing at the lower end of the income scale. But, you know, you said, "Don't talk about plans." Well, that means walking into a dark room and just stumbling around and not knowing what's going to happen. We need comprehensive planning, for example. You know, we talk about the climate crisis. The climate crisis includes both ocean sea rise as well as rises in our water table. We can mention a number of places around Brookline where, you know, people may be looking at for housing development, but in fact, you know, are very marshy during certain times of the year after certain rainfall. So, you know, comprehensive plan would look at, you know, those issues and make sure that, you know, the development of housing or other developments is done in a way that's not going to have long-term negative consequences. And also, look at issues of open space and parks and other infrastructure, make sure that we don't overbuild from the perspective of the capacity of our infrastructure to absorb the additional things. Is that the end?
You've got to have one more second.
Okay, I'm going to use them.
Please conclude.
Also, keep our eyes and ears open for land coming available, like happened at Newbury because there are a lot of other parcels that could happen, could come available suddenly. I want to be very careful about Stop &amp; Shop and TJ Maxx. We have to balance the fact that these are great parcels for development with the fact that they are parcels that are used heavily by seniors in terms of Stop &amp; Shop in particular and our lower-income residents in terms of TJ Maxx. So, I mean, that's an example of how, you know, we have a number of, you know, concerns. We have to balance the needs of, you know, different parts of our community to make sure that, you know, it is equitable. That's it?
Thank you. That answer actually makes for a very good transition to the next and final question.
Oh, I have a few more seconds?
We'll give them back to you later, Bernard. Because the next question is related to the climate change questions that were just mentioned. And I have to say on this question again, it's a matter of getting to the specifics and some things that sound great in theory when it comes to addressing climate change are very hard to put into practice. And some of you remain, may remember the very complicated debate we had at Town Meeting not so very long ago about the so-called ZAB articles regarding electrification and addressing emissions and climate change here in Brookline. So, the town has set a goal of zero emissions, that means no reliance on fossil fuels, by 2050. What steps do you think should be taken to achieve this goal and what funding sources can be tapped for this purpose? We'll begin with Susan Park.
Okay, thank you, Sean. I think one of the obvious ones that I can think of is solar panels, solar energy. And there's, you know, there's opportunity with the state. I've seen discounts that have been given or even monetary funds if you go ahead and put solar panels in your home. And, for example, I think Tommy Vitolo, he was at someone's house just a couple of months ago and how this was done. And so, once you put the solar panels in, you know, you have to pay towards it, but then after a certain time, it, having the solar panel pays for itself. And so, this is one example of how we could do this. The other thing is having more, you know, electric cars and encouraging that for our community, having more electric charging stations. I know we just recently passed the, you know, it's, if you're going to build new homes, you have to, you can't use gas. So, that's, you can't install gas. So, I think that's the other thing, and I think we're in the right direction, having a policy in place so that moving forward, you know, we are trying very hard to get to that 2050 goal. The other thing would be, you know, something even outside the box as the takeaway containers, takeaway containers that people use when they go to stores, you know, perhaps we, perhaps we need to ban them because that plastic, when it goes back and when you go throw them out, that just goes into the landfill. And so, you know, that's another idea. I mean, what you could do, because look at, look at traders and look at all these grocery stores, they're now used to bringing their own recyclable bags. It's just like after you get started, people get used to it, you know, and now it's like, you know, they have paper bags, but you also can bring your own. So, maybe the next one idea would be to ban those plastic containers, those one-time plastic containers because it's horrible for the environment, but also it's not good for us, for our health too because oftentimes people will put that in the microwave and the, the plastic and that is not good for our bodies either. So, these are just different steps we can take. There's, you know, a lot of, a lot of other things. You know, even if you go on the town website, there is the, the green electricity plan. I think it's, you only get out of that if you opt out. So, I'm really proud of our town how we're already doing that. And I know that there are other companies that, you know, they, because I got them in the mail if you want to go elect, if you want to, you know, change your electricity bill, you can use this other company. So, that's the other thing because I think, looking at the stats, there is probably, I want to say 30, maybe 30 to 40% of people in Brookline who are still using, I think, EverSource. So, there's these other things that we could do. Thanks.
Thank you. David Perlman.
So, we've been talking a lot about development and in that context, climate change is certainly extremely relevant because as we're looking at development opportunities and reducing consumer costs, with that, we also have an excellent chance to put in greener technologies for both our newer constructions as well as any existing buildings that we look to retrofit. And one of the advantages to retrofitting an existing structure is you don't end up with the loss of embodied carbon. And so, that's something that I would like for us to be mindful of when we're talking about development. Energy efficiency is really critical for obvious reasons because it helps reduce our carbon footprint, it reduces our emissions, it's something that's already required in many new constructions, and we ought to take advantage of the many state and federal rebates that already exist for putting in green technologies and other forms of renewable energy in our existing homes, municipal buildings, and other private retail establishments. We also, if we try to make our neighborhoods walkable and accessible, we also reduce reliance on automobile use. And that's another critical way that we can reduce our carbon footprint. If we develop around transportation hubs that already exist as part of our public transportation network, that further reduces the need for automobile use. I think that we can do a little more on the municipal end in terms of providing bus transportation for populations beyond students. We have a lot of seniors in town, obviously, and only one senior center. And finding ways to bring more of our South Brookline seniors to the senior center in an environmentally friendly manner, that also helps. And so, I would look for opportunities where we could have these win-win exchanges that are a win for the environment and a win for another priority.
Thank you. Bernard Green.
The climate crisis is really an important issue for all of us, but there are two pieces to it. Number one, there's a climate crisis in general and our small part in reducing that are the things we do here in Brookline that may not seem large in the global scope of things but is still important. And the other side is mitigation to help town, the town and residents deal with the fact that it's coming at us with heat, with cold, with, you know, water problems, et cetera. So, in terms of the climate, the town addressing the climate crisis, we have a Warren Article that I think is very, very helpful, and that's Warren Article 14, the ZAB Warren Article, to make it easier through zoning changes, make it easier for people to electrify their homes and buildings, especially in high-density areas. And as we're talking about density, that becomes more increasingly important. There are also, you asked about funds for doing some of this, or there are many state and federal grants for energy efficiency and fossil-fuel-free technologies. We should, you know, be very aggressive in going after that and helping people understand how they, as individuals, can take advantage of these grants also. I would also add in terms of our small contribution to helping the climate crisis is to expand our tree canopy. You know, we have a urban forest climate resiliency master plan, it's a mouthful. And, you know, we need to be a little more aggressive with respect to the recommendations of that and address issues of our tree canopy as they pop up in many contexts, you know, from developers sort of ignoring their responsibility to save trees to other things. In terms of mitigation, we have to be aware of the fact that the climate changes that are causing heat rise, water table rise, et cetera, are going to affect mostly, primarily or most difficultly, people, low-income people. And for example, this is a reason for us to make sure we pay special attention to upgrading the climate resiliency of BHA housing and using, you know, additional funds that the state says it's going to provide for that and other purposes for state-owned or state-funded properties. I mentioned earlier the, you know, water table issue. I mean, it's something that I find a little scary because I know a lot of areas around Brookline where if the water table rises just a little bit, it's going to be lakeside property, or we're going to have lakeside property. So, you know, that is a question of, you know, drainage infrastructure as well as making sure that we're not building, you know, multifamily housing in Griggs Park, for example. So, you know, those are, you know, some of the things that I think we need to do both from the standpoint of making our small contribution to climate, to the climate crisis, and on the other hand, and equally important, because we can make a difference, and that is come up with mitigation for the impacts of the climate crisis on our town and our residents.
Thank you. Alec Levovitz.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. Yeah, I'm the youngest candidate on this stage. I'm one of the youngest members of Town Meeting. Climate, the climate crisis is the defining challenge facing my generation and it will be a lifelong fight. There's a lot we can do in Brookline. And to Bernard's point, it's not just about our contribution to the global fight against climate crisis, but there's a lot we can do to mitigate impacts here. And to the point raised by other candidates, I think there's a lot we can do without the necessity for setting aside large sums of town money. We've already made big strides leading the way statewide and making fossil-fuel zoning a reality. That doesn't cost us a dime, but it ensures that new construction in Brookline is going to be as green as possible. We have our school building and other municipal building process where Pierce, another great example, we've opted to build that in a fossil-fuel-free way, and that will have massive contributions to our emissions reduction goal. Others had mentioned biking and pedestrian infrastructure. Anything we can do to make it easy to get around Brookline without relying on a car and accessible to seniors, to folks with disabilities, to all residents can go a long way, not only to improving our quality of life in terms of mitigation by improving air quality and safety for pedestrians and bikers by just reducing per capita emissions thanks to cars. I think David mentioned focusing dense housing development around I think David mentioned focusing dense housing development around the public transportation resources that we are so fortunate to have. I totally agree. I think that's a key component of this. The, I, I encourage everyone who's interested in this issue to go to the town website and look at the Electrify Brookline Toolkit that has been put together by the amazing people we have, amazing volunteer folks we have on the Zero Emissions Advisory Board. There's a lot we can do in terms of helping residents with the very expensive initial cost of installing heat pumps or solar panels, as others mentioned. But even on a cheaper, on the cheaper side, we can simply help them with winterizing their existing structures, which can save lots of emissions and save money in the long term for those residents, improving affordability. So, I, in terms of the funding sources, as other mentioned, there's a lot of state and federal funding out there, particularly thanks to the Biden Administration's Inflation Reduction Act. We, it's incumbent on us that we take advantage, full advantage of all those opportunities as they become available. Also, to the point we raised about, for instance, pulling the lever of municipal building, well, that can be incorporated relatively, at a relatively low cost into our capital budget and debt exclusion planning process. The ZAB articles that we considered at Town Meeting, some did call for the implementation of a surcharge on emissions activities for residents or certain motor vehicles. You know, I, I am wary to do anything that contributes to the affordability issue, so my pledge as a member of the Select Board would be, I would only support a direct surcharge on residents if it were put to the voters for approval first. So, I think it's key that we pull the levers we can without contributing to the cost of living crisis in Brookline, and if we feel that there's a well-developed proposal to go further that people are supportive of, I would put it to the voters before supporting that personally.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you for your thoughtful answers to these questions that we posed on a wide range of issues that I think are very important to Brookline. We're going to turn to closing statements now, and you each have two minutes for any closing remarks you'd like to offer. We're going to start with David Perelman.
And I would like to thank everyone who helped put this event together, and for those of you who are in the audience. I think that experience does matter, and I have a lot of experience. I've been a Town Meeting member for over 10 years in Precinct 15, School Committee for six years, last two years as Chair of the School Committee, helping to manage what's the largest portion of our municipal budget. And I would bring those experiences with me to the Select Board. I already work with many of the Select Board members and the Town Administrator and the Advisory Committee in my capacity as School Committee Chair and as a School Committee Member. And those who work with me would agree that I am very collaborative, I'm calm, maybe a little too calm for some people, but that can be an asset because no matter what someone throws at me, no matter how difficult a situation or how angry someone is, I'm fine with it. I can take it. I have a very thick skin. I don't think I have any enemies out there, but if I do, that's okay because I would be representing you too. And I really do mean that. When I first ran for School Committee, I was fairly unknown, and there were some people who didn't want me to get on, and now they're some of my most ardent supporters. And, do I still have time, or?
Yes. No, I'm still waiting.
All right.
More time, does he have?
He has another minute.
So, I would certainly hope that the voters will appreciate that I have the temperament, the experience, the qualities of unifying disparate groups together under trying circumstances, that I'm very deliberative in my approach, that I listen, and that I take the role very seriously. I would give it my all. So, I ask for your support on May 7th, and if you have any questions, reach out to me and electperelman.com.
Thank you very much. Bernard Green.
Oh, we're going this way, okay. I'd like to thank the Neighborhood Alliance for this forum, which they put on every year. It's very, very helpful, both for the candidates to sort of get their thinking together around issues that are important to, important segment of our community, and, and, you know, give that community an opportunity to hear us, get a sense of what we stand for and what we, what we would do or are doing in the offices that we are aspiring to or that we serve in. I want to emphasize also my experience. I've been on the, in town government for 18 years, beginning in 2006 when I ran for Town Meeting in Precinct 7. I've been on the Select Board for nine years, as well as being Chair for three years, you know, three years during COVID and the George Floyd nationwide situation where I had to make some very tough decisions and, and things that do things that not everyone liked, but which I felt were important for the town. I've been on many committees, committees organized that selected everything from Town Administrators to Police Chiefs and Fire Chiefs. I also served on the Advisory Committee and was on the Audit Committee for seven years until I said, "Someone else needs to do this." I, I emphasize, you know, my experience, which has given me a sort of understanding of how this town operates, both well as well as not so well, and ability to, to address the issues that come up with, to the town, understanding how various interests and, and issues have to be balanced and, you know, what the long-term needs of the town are and, you know, how that, that informs, you know, the decision-making that we make on the Select Board daily. And I think I have a couple more seconds banked. Go, go to my website, bernardgreen.org.
Thank you. Alec Levovitz.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you for an excellent job monitoring tonight. I, I think we can all now see why Sean was selected. You held our feet to the fire, and I think Brookline is appreciative of it. I'll keep my closing brief. I applaud anyone who's stayed with us to the end for this really great discussion about municipal policy. The way I view what my role would be on the Select Board would be your liaison as a member of the public. As a Town Meeting member, getting up to speed is not easy. Navigating our town website and the goings-on of our local government is not easy. It is time-consuming and complicated. I will consider my first three years a success if I've in any way contributed to making our local government more transparent, more accessible, and more responsive to the feedback we receive from our constituents, you. Like I mentioned at the top, building coalitions is what I've done in Town Meeting. It's what I want to continue doing on the Select Board. It's the only way that we'll be able to make real progress on the issues that matter. And I agree with my fellow colleagues, experience does matter, but so do our ideas. And sometimes new voices and new perspectives can bring positive change, as I think I've demonstrated in Town Meeting and I hope to demonstrate on the Select Board. And just in closing, I think it was a former president who used to say, "Trust but verify." You know, we've mentioned a lot of our policy positions today, and, you know, talking about them is great. Fortunately for you, the voters, all of us have been on Town Meeting, and we have voting records. I would encourage folks at home who want to learn more about where we stand on these issues, go to my website, alecforbrookline.com. You can find all four of our total complete Town Meeting voting records for the last two years, and I ask you to judge us both on our words but also our actions. And with that, thank you to the BNA, to the audience at home, and to the folks who joined us in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Park, you have the last word.
Okay. Sean and Linda and BNA, thank you so much for having this as well. It was a wonderful forum, and I hope that all the people who are watching and who are still here, I hope you really learned a lot about us. You know, I have a heart for all the people of Brookline. Seniors make almost 30% of our town, and I really care about what happens to seniors and that they can, that they can age in place. Asians make up 18% of our town, and I, and I feel like it's time that our executive leadership has someone who looks like an Asian. Immigrants make up 31% of Brookline. My parents were immigrants. 30% of Brookline are under 18 or over 65. I have a 14-year-old, and I have two daughters in their 20s, and like I, I already talked about the seniors. I have raised a family and started over when my husband and I had a surprise baby, when we were thinking we'd be empty nesters, so we've done it two times around. And I have the passion, the energy, the integrity, the time, the values, and the experience to make Brookline better in many different ways. I am seasoned, experienced, I'm creative, and I take risks. We don't always, we don't want all the same people on the Select Board. We need diversity of perspectives and experiences. The work that I've done for Brookline, helping draft policies, capping marijuana stores afore, serving during the hardest times in Brookline, writing stories that ended up in Brookline Tab that highlighted information that I wanted our community to know about during our hardest times. I don't have to convince you what I'm going to do. My bottom line is I'm going to do what's best for the town of Brookline, not just for a small minority, but for everyone. And, and I'm also, you know, big on letting the people decide, and I want to hear from the people, I want to know what everyone's thinking, and I will, I will work very hard to try to understand, to collect that data. So, thank you very much. I hope you'll vote for me, Susan Park. My website is susanforbrookline.com. Thank you.
Thank you. We've reached the end of our allotted time for this Candidates Night, but I'm sure all of the issues that have been raised will be the subject of much additional discussion between now and Election Day. I want to thank the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance, the BNA, and particularly its co-chairs, Linda Roseman and Dan Salzman, for organizing this event. Special thanks also go to the Brookline Interactive Group, BIG, for broadcasting this Candidates Night. A link to a recording of the event will be posted on the BIG and the BNA websites. I expect that will take a day or so before it's up there, but if you want to watch this event again, or if there are people who didn't get a chance to watch it, you'll have that opportunity by going to that link. Most of all, the BNA and I thank the candidates for running and for participating in this forum, and you, we wish all of you the best for the remainder of the campaign, and I hope everyone will remember, please vote, May 7th in the town election. Thank you.[1793.71][1793.71]